Hi. Live, I'm just going to Facebook page.
Did you green light it, Katie?
Yes, you are all set and it's live.
Okay, the City of New Franklin Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is hereby called to order at 6:30 PM. Barry?
Roll call, Mr. Donatelli.
President.
Mr. Lowery here. Mr. Conley here. Mr. Holloway, I don't believe was able to get on yet. We don't see him. And Mr. Perdine.
Yeah.
And Mr. Crock is absent this evening. And you want me to go and read?
Yeah, go ahead.
Your poll.
It just says, you want me to, I'll read the the whatever. I'm sorry, the published letter. And then if you do, you want to read the next paragraphs?
Yep, yeah, I'll read the next paragraph. This meeting has been duly advertised in the South Side News Leader and the Suburbanite Weekly Newspapers. This meeting has also been advertised on the City of New Franklin Municipal Website. The City of New Franklin Planning and Zoning Commission is governed under Robert's Rules of Order. All comments and questions shall be directed to the Chairperson of the Commission, which is Mr. Donatelli, throughout the duration of this entire meeting. Please be advised that Commission may or may not render a decision on the items before this evening. Additional information may be required from the respective applicants. Or additional information may be sought from the City Engineer, City Law Director, or other sources in order to reach an informed decision.
Hey, so at this point, I'm going to read the notice of public hearing. The City of New Franklin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a YouTube livestream public hearing, which has been adjusted to become a Facebook livestream public hearing. On Thursday, May 13, 2021, at 6:30 PM from New Franklin City Hall to hear the following request. 2021-PZC-0 or 01 Love and Angel Foundation 3108 Vanderhoof Road, New Franklin, Ohio 44216, requesting a three-year conditional use renewal within the R2 medium-density residential district. And according to Article 8, Section 800.04K, indoor commercial recreational and Article 8, Section 800.01X outdoor commercial recreational, in order to operate indoor and outdoor recreational facility on behalf of a public charitable organization with an existing 40 feet, zero inches by 104 feet, zero inches detached mixed-use assembly building on the 19-acre property located at the Vanderhoof Road address. If you intend to testify, you must contact our office at 330-882-4611, extension 220, on or before Thursday, May 6, 2021, in order to register to speak on this particular case. In addition, comments or questions may be submitted by email to zoning@newfranklin.org on or before Monday, May 10, 2021, and shall be read as part of the official public record during the YouTube livestream public hearing. The public can access the YouTube livestream public hearing on the City of New Franklin YouTube channel. A link to the City YouTube channel may be accessed through the City of New Franklin Facebook page. And again, just to correct, all those references to YouTube are now Facebook Live. So that brings us back to our script here. And so our applicant, are you ready to speak?
I am, yes.
Okay. Please state your name and home address for the official record.
All right, Matthew Weber. Home address is 2555 Hartville Road, Rootstown, Ohio 44272.
Do you solemnly affirm the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
Okay, could you please describe the your updated proposal and we'll ask questions as needed?
Yes, certainly. It was nicely written in the notice of public hearing, but we are requesting a renewal of the conditional use permit that was granted back in, I believe, 2018. And we are just, obviously, it's a three-year renewal with with COVID and some of the things that we've all been dealing with. The progress of the building has been slow, but we are up and under roof and anxious to get this renewed and kind of finish the project off.
I'm going to go through a couple of the part here, things here. Are there any members of this commission who must abstain? Or has that any ex parte communications with the applicant or anyone involved with the case? Assume that is a no at this point. Barry, were you reading letters or emails into the public record?
Yeah, I'd like to mention that we have a lady waiting to testify tonight. Susan Sidelinker, she is standing by. She would like to present testimony to the Commission. And then I have also one letter I'm going to read into the official record. It's from Elizabeth Gibson, was sent to the zoning office. To whom this may concern, we live on Vanderhoof Road and we feel it's not a problem. It sits off the road and it's for families to bring their children with disabilities. We are all for the foundation. Thank you. That's all she wrote. But it's part of the record.
Thank you. Sorry, let me make sure I'm doing this. So I guess at this point, we're going to hear from Mrs. Sidelinker. I'm going to stop presenting. Go ahead.
My name is Sue Sidelinker. I live at 2919 Vanderhoof Road, New Franklin, Ohio 44216. My property is located directly across the street from the property in question. We've resided here for the past 31 years. My concerns, my main concerns are is the upkeep of the yard over the past 17 years. It's been neglected. The last, last week, the first time this yard was mowed properly and fully. I have a question about the pond that is up for proposal. I'd like to know who will be maintaining this since the yard is not maintained properly.
Is there a pond up for proposal here?
There, there is not currently a pond in proposal for this project. Not, not as part of this project, no.
Is there a pond on the property?
There is not currently a pond on the property, no.
So to address your, that question, that the pond, I don't, I was unaware of that, so I addressed that. As far as the property maintenance, otherwise, I can defer to Mr. Weber on that.
Yes, as far as the, the property, we do have people that, that mow. There's, there's immediately around the house. The rest of the property is noted as field and agricultural, so mowing of it is, I guess what I would say a subject to the owner's discretion as, as it is a parts of this have never been mowed, parts of it were mowed when I was, when I lived adjacent to the property, we, we mowed it a little differently, but but yeah, I mean, I would say obviously, our goal, our goal and objective is to keep it, to keep it mowed. We do have people that mow, the, the neighbor actually, Jerry Starkey, a fabulous neighbor down the road, actually comes and mows the property for us. Unfortunately, he fell onto some health issues just this year and, and so we've been kind of adjusting the, the mowing process to try and get to get it mowed. But I'm, I'm sitting in the lawn right now in my truck and it looks, looks very nice. Including, including the adjacent field next door.
Yes, this is the first time in 17 years. The neighbors that had it before were an elderly couple and they always mowed that side field and kept that very presentable. That is an eyesore for me looking out my windows of my house.
We, we certainly, we certainly will do, we will certainly do what we, what we can to keep that. We have, as a matter of fact, we have planted some very nice tall, what are now tall pine trees along that portion of the, of the road for this exact reason. Because we do know that some, some neighbors are concerned, as they should be for, for the neighborhood. So we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that that certain views were, were present and, and that we could have some privacy of our own as well. So we, we can continue, we can continue to plant those, those trees along that edge if that's also for, at the the Commission's request, we'd be happy to plant more pine trees.
My other question is, what exactly is the barn going to be used for? Are there going to be events there? How many people will be attending these events and where will they park? And what's going to happen to our control? What's going, it says my internet. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, said it was unstable. Who's going to control the traffic? We live in a very quiet neighborhood and we kind of like to keep it that way. And is the facility going to be open to the public?
No, no, you want me to answer that, Mr. Chairman? I apologize. Okay, certainly. Yeah, and this is part of obviously our first, when we got the conditional use, so it should be public information, but yes. No, the, the whole objective here is this is not open for public use. This is by invitation only or appointment only, if you want to look at it that way. The, the idea is, is to have, have an area where families with children with disabilities, specifically, we, we have, you know, a child that has Angelman Syndrome and a number of children as we have an organization dedicated to those children. For them to be able to come and say, rather than going to a Chuck E. Cheese or, or whatnot to, to get away or go to a public park where maybe their child is trying to use a piece of equipment, but other, other children are not. Give them a place to go to feel safe, to feel like they can go and enjoy themselves. They'll call ahead, they'll say, hey, you know, we want to go down Saturday or, or whatever, and there's going to be, it's going to be no bigger, it would be no bigger than a birthday party for a, for a child at your house. It's going to be, you know, possibly, and I say this, you know, assuming this is what our hope is, is that we hope that, you know, grandparents, aunts, uncles can come over, they can feel safe, they can enjoy themselves, not worry about a child that's compromised and, and, and everybody else around them and it's easier to keep an eye on them and just have a good time. So yeah, no, it is, it is not intended to be open to the public. There's no fees. This is purely a nonprofit organization, that this is something that we have donors that just feel compelled that this is a a great opportunity to do this. And we would love to have been open obviously to, to offer this a year ago or two years ago. But things obviously are a little bit slower from that perspective. And I think at our next three-year renewal, it will be an easy, an easy thing to track. I'm sure Mrs. Sidelinker will, will see and, and she'll maybe hopefully come on and say, you know, wow, the, there was no, no traffic any different than than when I have a birthday party for my grand, grandchild or whatever. So that's our goal. I mean, it's, I grew, I, I lived right next to this. I lived across the street from Mrs. Sidelinker. I, I apologize now because I think she and I might have not seen eye to eye with, with a dog in the past. But let's say that's in the past and I, I hope that at 51, I've grown out of that, that phase of my life and, and working to be a good neighbor here. So that's, that's our intention.
Okay, so my request would be is if you're going to put the pine trees in, I think that's a great idea. But I would like to see between the pine trees and the ditch that kept mowed because we just added a huge addition onto our house and our windows overlooked that. And when you don't mow, that's what I look at is weeds and we work very hard to keep our property up to perfection as much as we can.
Yeah, and, and it, and it does look very nice. I mean, I will, I will say that. Your, your, your yard, your, your yard looks very nice. Ours is obviously about a 10-foot strip between a ditch and some pine trees and, and obviously, we will, we will do our part to mow that and, and keep that, keep that in order. And if by any, if by any chance as a nonprofit organization, if you know of any, if you know of any Boy Scout troops or whatnot that would like, like projects, we're always open to have volunteers.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Weber.
Yes.
I was going to ask him to give an update on the status of the building. I know the building is under roofing that, but where are we at as far as completion? You know, internally and externally on the building. I know it's been a work in progress, so I've had, you know, inquiries on that, on where that stands and what your projected time of completion is.
Yeah, that's a great question. And from the sounds of that question, you, you would make a very good board member because the board members ask the same questions and, and our, on our board. Obviously, the building is under roof. We have, we, we just got power. Let's put this way, we, we have the, the trenching and whatnot to the building for power. Obviously, with some wet weather, we haven't had a chance to necessarily grade and get the transformer out. I've been in contact with the electric company, so that'll be coming in soon. I do have an excavator that's, that is lined up and, and he told me, he told me he'd be out in three weeks. Again, being a contractor and whatnot, there's, you know, a little subject to his schedule, but that should get the, the building area graded off. And then the, the actual building contractor himself, we've been working through kind of the final, final pieces with the building department with regards to with regards to the plumbing. And, and I'm going to say that I'd like to say that within, you know, around the middle of June, everything should be kicking back up and they should come in and be knocking this off quickly. We, we are running into a little bit of material, material issues, but, but it's nothing we can't overcome. It's, it's part of the industry. And unfortunately also, we're, you know, we, we've hired, we've hired people and maybe you know or don't know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to keep some schedules around these days and I think COVID's no excuse anymore, but we're working towards it and I'm hoping the middle of June, we're, we're back up in full swing and getting it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, are there any questions from the members of the Commission?
I have none.
Nothing here, Paul?
I just want to verify entrance and exit to this is all on Vanderhoof?
That is correct, yes.
Presumably, across the street or directly across the street from Mrs. Sidelinker?
One of the driveways is directly across from Mrs. Sidelinker, the other is positioned, I believe, against what used to be the price property, but is what I believe is to the east if I have my directions correct, so, yes.
I'm going to share my screen again real quick just for verification to be thorough on this. Let's see maps. So if I'm correct, I'm looking at the property now?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. With that said, I have no further questions. I'm sorry, I do have a family argument going on in the background here. I'm going to mute this. Sorry. Somewhere, I'll mute it. Share. Okay, I'm good. At this point, I believe our next phase of this would be if we have no further things, does anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to let you know, we, we would not have a, a stormwater report on this from our city engineer because he had already examined it three years ago in relation to the, the structure that was being built. So really, there, there really is nothing to address on that particular front. That's really all I can say at this point in time.
Is there any construction involved in that? I'm, I'm sorry, since you did bring that up, is there any construction involved in the, in the stormwater management? Or is that because of the size of the property, whatever, it's not an issue?
It is the size of the property. It is approximately 19 acres, so it's quite a large piece of land.
I mean, goes down.
Mrs. Sidelinker, could you mute your mic while we're having this discussion, please?
Sorry, I thought I did.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. All right, well, I'm open to a, a motion. If anybody is willing to put one together.
Is there any conditions the, the board would like to put on, on anything? In addition to when we, we, part of the motion, we have to reread the whole notice of public hearing again, except the contact information. But if there's any information you want to add to that, any conditions or any concerns, you gentlemen can do that.
Well, I think probably all of us are, are wondering in these times when construction materials are hard to get and labor is hard to find. I think we're all a little nervous about granting three more years. You know, not knowing when it's going to be finished, and I think that's probably what you're alluding to. Is it, is that what he's asking for, three, another three years?
Correct, that is standard fare for a, a conditional use. Mr. Lowery is, you know, for this type of project, we, you have to go in increments of three. He already did the three and it expired in January, so now we're up for three now. It was delayed because of the building con, you know, construction and all that.
And I wouldn't be surprised if it's taken that long to build the building if he hasn't had to re-permit it. Had ongoing work.
Barry, can I ask where we're at with on the building? Cause what, what's been, what's been passed so far and stamped on his building permit? How far along are we?
Actually, Mr. Conley, I've not received any information on that. You know, what, what has been
We asked the applicant. On the inspections.
Yeah, I haven't received no information on that. As far as, you know, electrical, plumbing, structural, I've not received anything and, you know, with the county, which obviously that's handled to some of the county building standards department that we rarely see that stuff comes across our desk.
Well, like John said, you know, or Dick said rather, you, you, you've got provisions, but usually, especially with some of the guys leaving, we're, we're doing like six to eight months and we're going through the process. I'd like to know, like where we're at on that building, especially if we've added electric already, where we at? If we give them another three and we haven't moved anywhere in the last year, some of that stuff has expired.
If, if, this, this is Matt Weber, the applicant. If I, if I may ask, just, just quickly on, on the conditional use, the conditional use is for the, the actual use of the structure. I, I don't know that there's a, a timeline on the, the process of construction or completion of construction. The, the, the conditional use is obviously for our request for the use. Which, which obviously if, let's just say, I, I don't certainly want this to go because our goal is to have this. If I were to walk into a board meeting and tell people this is going to be another three years, I'll, I won't, I won't walk out, let's put it that way. But, but I guess it's, it's the conditional use. If, if nothing, if nothing were to occur for the next three years, then there's actually, as regards to the conditional use, there's no, there's no adverse condition to it other than if, if we had just started a building that, that wasn't finished. Now, obviously, we're going to finish it. And, and I don't know that there's, I don't know that there's a timeline on your zoning, on the zoning for a, for completion of a structure, is there, or am I, or am I viewing incorrectly? But to that, to that point, the building department and Barry, I thought, I apologize because I can't think of that, I can't think of the building official's name. I know Chris Randall's and he's the head, head chief building official. He and I've discussed this project, but one of, one of the, the inspectors had contacted me and had indicated that I believe you may have reached out to him to, to check on the status. And, and obviously, plans are in, plans are in their hands. We have received approval for foundations for the structure, which we have up for the electrical, for the plumbing. The, the, the plumbing contractor has to go and present his certificate. As far as what's been signed off on the building, I would have to check with the contractor. I believe he has to call for final rough building inspection. And he was going to do that at the time of, of the electrical, so I think that's kind of where we're at on that. I don't, I don't know anything more, but I certainly could find out if, if it's, and Barry, whoever it was you might have talked to, I can't apologize, I can't remember his name, it wasn't. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Joe, because Joe, Joe called me, yeah.
If I may, and from a standing stand, zoning standpoint, it says on our, well, on a conditional use certificate, it's, it's good for three years. It expires three years from the issuance date. So I mean, obviously, we have to re-up the conditional use or the, it's up to the planning and zoning commission to decide about reissuing it. As far as these building, it is really a separate matter from the standpoint that the building is already, you know, under roof and all that. I think it was just kind of a point of clarification on the behalf of the neighbors and also for the city that we kind of wanted to get an idea when we can look forward to, that where it's going to be wrapped up. And that's one of the reasons why I put an inquiry into the building department, but I guess a lot of the building permits are kind of open-ended in a lot of ways from their standpoint. But I can tell you, a zoning permit for a building has a one-year expiration date on it, but what that essentially means, I can pull a zoning certificate today, I can sit on it for 364 days, go out shovel some dirt, it commits a project and I'm still good.
So, right. Yeah, and, and I was, I was only asking just, just from that perspective of clarification, again, trust me. This is, I, if I don't get, if I don't get calls daily from, from board members and unfortunately, or fortunately, one of those happens to be my mother, who's very, a very passionate woman and doesn't understand after, after a week of rain, why when the sun shines, you can't be, you can't be out there working. I, I have people on me to, to work to try and get this, get this finished as quickly as we can. And, and we're on that. I, I mean, let, let's just say, like I said, middle of June, I better see some dirt flying and, and hear some nails, nail guns going or else I'm going to have bigger problems than a certificate.
That's all I have, gentlemen. I just, just a point of clarification there.
I have a couple of comments, and Barry, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. He really doesn't need this conditional use until this building is finished and he's ready to use it for conditional use. Is that correct?
That is correct. Really, it doesn't go into effect till he starts using the building for his functions.
So my thought is, my thought is this, why worry about this until the time the building is up and running because he's just going to have to reapply sooner than if he would wait till the building's ready to go and then apply.
That's a very good.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to interject real quick and I, and I appreciate that. As, as a matter of fact, Barry and I had that, had that conversation earlier on for that exact reason and and, and I think just the way kind of everything's come together, we've, we felt in, in talking to Barry that it would, it would make sense to, to at least get that renewed. I'm, I'm absolutely on board with your, your thought is, is correct. It's not a, it's not a conditional use until we begin using it as such, otherwise it's just a vacant building. But, but we, we did talk about that and I appreciated everybody's input, Barry and whatnot, but we just decided to go ahead and move forward with it so that it was something, something behind us, so to speak. So I'm happy to pursue it either way.
Yeah, to that point, I was, I was thinking that it would be a huge burden on someone to make the approval conditional on some sort of approval or signing off from the, the building department, in which case there's a lot more checking to go off here, which could delay it once it is ready to use. So to, to your point, losing three months or four months off of the conditional use might end up saving you two or three months on the other end of it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, agree.
Well, I thought that Well, a thought that the commission could do is i- if you are thinking of approving it, you could make it the uh to initiate it really essentially on the day that the building is ready to go. I mean, that right doesn't make a lot of sense to approve it right at the moment, like Mr. Lowery said, and you're sitting there for another month or so with no activity in the building, you know, nothing going on. So I mean, I don't see an issue if the uh commission puts a condition on there that says, okay, it will become effective uh as the day that uh you know, Mr. Weber comes in and has all his stamped-off approvals on his building and that. I mean, we can really set the date when it's initiated and start the three-year clock ticking then. Right now, it's kind of a moot point. There's really nothing to go on there.
Yeah, see, the, these are very strange times we're living in for construction and health and everything. And I, my thinking is this, the reason it's conditional use was to, for him to have the building up in a year and the neighbors to be able to look and view what's going on there and come to this meeting and and say, do we have objections or not? Nothing's happened really for them to even say anything. So I guess that's where my issues are. Conditional use means that everything go well after it was up, or the neighbor's satisfied. Is there any real problems? We're not seeing any of that. So you know, I I guess I'm being the devil's advocate with respect to that.
Well, you are correct, Mr. Lowery. The conditional use that was approved in twenty eighteen was never really utilized.
Exactly.
Yeah, the the building went up in that period of time, but as far as a measuring stick of the conditional use, it never materialized. So essentially, he's setting the clock right now. I mean, for the, for the, Roy, the the past conditional use was a moot point, in in my opinion.
Okay.
Was an issue. So I think that what we could do here is consider what I had mentioned, that, you know, it could become effective, but I, it has to be within a parameter. We can't say that you know, we're we're going to start this conditional use six months from now, you know, and then have it go three years. I I think Mr. Weber's going to have to give us some sort of an indicator, a a reasonable time when that could become effective.
Well, I think you just answered my questions. Let's let's look at it this way. If we're granting conditional use now, we're ahead of the game because the building's halfway up and almost done. Correct?
Incorrect.
So we're really ahead of the curve that we were at three years ago.
Right.
So, having said that, I I would really have no objections uh to it.
We'll let Mr. Weber give his input on uh on a starting date. What he thinks.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm I'm fine. I am fine really e- either way. If it's, if it started today, um it it it, and the the three-year clock starts, you know, now, like I said, our our goal and objective is to be uh back full swing, middle of June and be done. Uh you know, have this, you know, open and whatnot so that we we can enjoy and people can enjoy in the um uh, you know, for the winter months, obviously, fall and winter months. So I I'm okay, we would lose a couple of months, or we can say that the, when I come in with uh final occupancy uh from Summit County and can provide that information that uh you had granted at that time, I I'm not concerned uh about, you know, whatever, what what would it be? Hopefully, just uh what, three months, uh June to June to to the fall here, September, uh three, you know, three months would be fine if it's easier for us to do this and then not have to come back in in three months, or you just make it uh a an administrative move at that point, whatever your guys are most comfortable with. We really are are fine.
All right, so do we have any further questions? All right, do we have a motion?
I firmly believe with the, with the use of the building, as he's described it, uh I think it would be a great addition to have that there, and I think he's answered all the questions for Mrs. Sidelinker uh with respect to keeping up that area and planting the trees. So I would make the motion that we grant him the three-year extension.
Uh would you like to put the uh caveat that that three-year extension begins uh upon final approval or immediately?
Well, I think we ought to do it immediately because that gives him a head start and and has a clock running sooner than later. Uh just in case there are some issues down the road.
I I second the motion.
Okay, we do have a a motion to approve the three-year renewal effective immediately. And that's seconded by uh Mr. Donatelli. Okay, I am going to do a roll call for the entire commission. Okay, uh Mr. Donatelli.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Lowery.
Yes.
Mr. Conley.
Yes.
And Mr. Perdine.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously, four to zero. Congratulations, uh, Mr. Weber, and we will have your uh printed-out copy of the conditional use certificate effective probably on Monday, is when it'll actually be dated, so.
Well, th- thank, thank you all very much. And 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 Mrs. Sidelinker, if you're, if you're still on and and listening, we will uh we will certainly do that to to work. Our our goal is to be uh a good neighbor and and certainly uh have a better relationship maybe than we did when I was uh uh younger and living down the road from you. So uh we'll we'll do our part, and if there's ever any issues, please reach out.
Thank you. Uh Barry, would you like to? Thank you. Barry, would you like to comment on our next meeting?
Uh yes, gentlemen, I did send a uh uh email out to everyone today. Uh as you know, the governor has uh is going to be lifting the uh the meeting restrictions on June second. And then uh the mayor actually put out an email on that, that that's also going to be effective with the city as well. So I'm looking at, we'll probably, well, not probably, we will have a meeting on June tenth, and it will be live in City Hall. We're going to go back to our regular meetings. So uh I decided to let everybody know that. We're going to have uh one case on uh rev- involving Mr. Hornick's storage uh project that he brought to the commission last fall. He's got a final plan uh in the works, which ironically was put together by Mr. Weber. So he will be back with us uh next month. And also, we may have a veterinarian office going in on Dr. Stone's property, former property there on six nineteen. Uh they, I'm waiting to get an application on that. They want to put in a a vet's office there. So uh but that has to go through the planning commission as well.
All right.
That's all I have.
With that, uh I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I've motioned to adjourn by uh Mr. Donatelli. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh second by Mr. Lowery. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh you can hear from me soon, and we'll be back live on June tenth.
Look forward to it.
Yep. Hey, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Hey. Thank you.